All right. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting on Wednesday, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty. Confirming we have audio and video, Ms. Field.
Yes, they are both working.
Thank you. I'll now call the meeting to order. For the record, we have Commissioners Smith, Wild, Brown, and Shepherd here today. And now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. The Planning and Zoning Commission provides for a public hearing for quasi judicial administrative land use decisions, appeals, and legislative actions specific to land use regulations. The format for the public hearing will follow the following procedures for each application. Presentation by the applicant, city staff report, public testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, discussion of the hearing among the commission members, and then a decision. If you wish to give public testimony, there are some rules. No person shall be permitted to speak at the public hearing until the person is recognized by the chair to do so. The commission will not address those who speak out of order. If you have questions, you can ask them during your turn for public testimony. And the applicant can respond to them during the rebuttal, or the commission can ask the question of staff during the discussion. Please sign up if you would like to speak. The signup sheets are over on the table. If you sign up, then you'll have your opportunity to speak. If not, then you will not have that opportunity. When you do speak, please state your name clearly and your address. Ms. Field, do we have changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a change to the agenda. And it is under a new business item, conditional use permit fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash zero 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 eight wishes to be continued to the date certain of August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
All right. Thank you. No other changes than that?
No.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda includes items of business which may not require separate discussion. From time to time, we may vote on items to the consent agenda. Following in addition of any item to the consent agenda, we will vote on the remaining items in one motion. At this time, I do see that there are two items that may be moved to the consent agenda. CPA FY two zero two three zero 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 three floodplain amending the sections of Garden City code eight dash four H flood hazard. With this item, there was a late addition to the website. Did all of the commission members have a chance to review that?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay. Any reason why you had seen a need for discussion on that item? Okay. Also, item D or E, I'm sorry, CPA FY two zero two four zero 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 three extensions amending sections garden code eight dash six A general provisions and eight dash six A eight, the expiration of approvals. So any discussion among the commissioners on why that item should not be moved to the consent?
No.
No. No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. In addition to those items and the changes from staff, we have the approval of the minutes from June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. As well as CPA FY two zero two four dash zero 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 five design review administration move to a date of August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And then also CPA FY two zero two four dash zero 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 four buffers move to a date certain of August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. So any discussion for the consent agenda?
And Chairman, just a point of order, just to make sure that there's no one who wishes to provide testimony on those two items.
Thank you very much for that. Anyone from the public who would like to buy testimony for the two items on the action item, so D CPA FY two zero two three zero zero three on the floodplain, anyone from the public wish to provide testimony on that item? All right. So you're none. How about item E CPA FY two zero two four zero zero three, the extensions amending sections of the Garden City code? Any public testimony on that item? All right, seeing none. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I will move approval of the consent agenda to consist of the approval of the minutes from June eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. Items B and C, which are CPA FY twenty-four dash five and CPA FY twenty-four dash four. Move those to a date certain of August twenty-one, twenty-four. And also to move to August twenty-one, twenty-four, CUP FY twenty-four dash eight. There's a conditional use permit. Along with items six D and six E, which are CPA FY twenty-three dash three and CPA FY twenty-four dash three.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild. I have the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further deliberation on these items? Very nine, I'll put this to vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. No. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to the regular agenda, new business. We have two items before the commission tonight, the first being item B. S U B FY two zero two four dash zero zero three Reese Town Homes preliminary flat processed as a planned unit development. Jeff has Hatch is requesting a twenty-eight residential lot and four common lot subdivision to be processed as a planning development. Property is currently located at two zero four West Thirty-Sixth Street, two zero three and two zero five West Thirty-Seventh Street. Ada County Parcels listed on the agenda in C two general commercial zoning district. We will now hear from the applicant, Mr. Hatch. If you would, as you approach, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is two hundred West Thirty-Sixth Street, Garden City, Idaho. Good evening, Commissioner Montoya and fellow commissioners. Thank you for your consideration of our subdivision application this evening. The proposed project is located in the blue area, which would be between West Thirty-Sixth Street and where the Orchard Onramp is going up the up the hill, which is kind of dog-legged by a street called Thirty-Sixth Street. And so it's about a block or so off of West Chindon Boulevard.
On scene.
Oh, on scene. Okay. The adjacent uses around the property to the southwest and northwest, we have residential dwellings of various natures of mobile homes and single-family residences. And then to the north, we have some commercial properties as well as to the southeast, and then we have that Orchard Onramp as well. Zowing map shows the area, even the proposed area as the C two zone. So the proposed project for clarification through the design review, we were proposing twenty-eight units. They wanted an additional diversity of housing, and so we incorporated some studio apartments, so more of a duplex style into those units. So two of those twenty-eight units are duplexes for a total of thirty units for additional diverse housing. The proposed project has thirty units for townhome. This would be a fee simple product, so versus an apartment, this would be something that an individual could buy the land and the actual dwelling. We have shared parking, and then for the duplexes, they would have covered parking for those units specifically. A common shared trash enclosure as well as bicycle parking on the street and proposed street improvements. In addition to that, access from Thirty-Sixth Street and Thirty-Seventh is proposed through a private drive, and we do have a fire engine hammerhead provided in there, too. So our discussions with ACHD, there was some input about potentially just accessing from one row or the other. Final conclusion would be that it improves mobility throughout this area, especially with the kind of odd configuration of Thirty-Sixth Street, if we carried that drive all the way through. It's our proposed landscaping plan. We have gone through the design review component of this, and they have their recommended approvals. The open space, which was also reviewed under the designer view. And then most recent staff comments, we do have a couple that I wanted to use to address. As far as the PUD, the question was, do we have adequate diversity of housing? And we do now with the proposed thirty units. We have the two new housing types, one being a single-family residence, and then we have the more studio-style duplex as well. There's a question about perimeter landscaping not being provided, and we did clarify that the intent is to have at least six foot wide, six five high maturity landscaping at the buffer for a screen with at least one tree planted every fifteen feet. So we did want to clarify that. And then lastly, as far as the parking lot goes, there's a question about landscape islands. So this is a point of, I guess, input or feedback from planning and zoning. We have, the intent of code is to shade the parking areas, so the trees in the islands are for shading the parking. Currently, we're proposing a combination of trees and shade structures. If the commission so chooses, we can incorporate the additional trees behind the shade structures for shading the landscaping. But the intent of code is achieved without additional plants, additional water, additional irrigation. If you so choose, we're more than happy to incorporate them, but at this time, we're trying to be drought conscious. And then through our through our feedback from the neighbors, a rare range of concerns, which we tried to consolidate, so we can speak to. Concerns about traffic, which I think is valid concern, and that's something that's evaluated fairly scrupulously through ACHD's report. Their findings was the distribution would provide less impact in this solution. And the proposed street traverses Thirty-Sixth and Thirty-Seventh would improve vehicular mobility in this area. The thoroughfare was another concern as far as that connection, and that was something that we looked at fairly thoroughly, because my office is right next to that thoroughfare. So if people are using this as a quote raceway, I'm going to experience it and live it every single day of my life, except for maybe Sundays. So with that said, we have a range of parking measures, and again, if there are additional comments from the neighbors or the commission, I'm open to suggestions, but at each of the public access points, which I'll go back. Which would be this pedestrian access here, and this pedestrian access here, we'd be proposing to actually incorporate a physical speed hump into those. So you have two, not not the little speed bumps that you have at like a grocery store, but an actual like physical hump the of some substantial width, because we have a pedestrian access there. So it gets the pedestrian up more readily visible, but it also creates a physical barrier for people racing through that access point. In addition, you can see we have a planter about midsection in both spots, and those those parking structures are also there to create a visual congestion of those spaces to cause people to calm their, you know, their speeds and travel carefully through that space. So those are our current solutions, but we we do encourage any feedback or in input along those lines as well. There's also concern for the project possibly not providing enough space for people to live comfortably. And as noted in the staff reports, project we're currently proposing meets the density requirements for the zone. The proposed project, also there is a commoner concern about removing existing trees. We did have a certified arborist come look at all the trees on the site, canvas that. We are preserving a range of trees and really focusing on eliminating the poor dying and dead trees on the site based on that report. Then lastly, the proposed phasing, which I can kind of back up so that we can visually see that a little bit. Phase one, which is in the staff report, would be just building A. And the access and improvements that we have off of Thirty-Seventh. Phase two would be buildings B and C, and then finishing with the with the hammerhead for buildings D and E. So for phase one, the concern was that the proposed phasing will require a hammerhead to be completed on the first phase for fire engine access will not be secured. The hammerhead will be completed on the first phase of the project for fire engine access. And with that, the remainder of the site will be secured by either existing fences that are currently there or a temporary fence. The land owner, and talking with them, is also proposing to use the area for later phasing for storage and staging for construction, but also just to keep the weeds down in general. And with that, they will be putting in a monitoring system to make sure that after construction for the individuals occupying that space before phase two starts, that that vacant land is being properly monitored. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Any questions for the applicants?
If nobody else does, I have some questions.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hatch. I want to direct your comments that you had about the changes you made as a result of design review having to do with a variety of housing types, which is something that we on the Planning and Zoning Commission are obligated to consider. And you explained. Would you explain again why those two buildings that you have there would be considered to be duplexes rather than four townhomes? Each one of them?
Commissioner Brown, I repeat your question and make sure I understand it, if that's okay, sir?
If I understand it, in response to the you have put in there to address the issue that's required of the PUD for a variety of housing types. You had made it converted to I can't remember the name, what you called them, but those two buildings that are in in the third part that you're going to build. Those are your you're saying that those will count as duplexes. I'm saying how do they differ from what would be called four townhomes in each building?
Thank you for your clarification, Commissioner Brown. I will pull up the site plan again for further clarification. So I'm talking with design review, and in the past, if we have, you know, say you know, thirty townhomes, we typically do about three varieties. So in this case, being at thirty or or you could argue we have three, some could say two, but we have townhomes in phase one, and then the end of phase one, where I have my little hand highlighted. So even in phase one, we're wanting to make sure that this is being achieved. This unit, you can see, has an access on the north, and it also has an access on the east and the south. This unit has a staircase on the side, which accesses a second-story studio. So that unit is independent of the ground floor space. So it is not a duplex in the sense that you would have a a unit attached to another unit, and then like a firewall or something like we're getting really cute or fancy with building code. But we physically changed the program, the construction methodology and the access, so that we have a distinctly different housing type with a distinctly different use and mixed income solution to achieve that. We wanted to make sure that we had that in our first phase. We also provided that in our second phase to meet the intent of the diversity of code. If the commission so choose to have additional ones, we could look at that, but this currently meets code. And you would have a ground floor unit that is studio that could be more of an ADA accessible type space. You also have a second floor unit, which maybe has a little bit nicer views. And then we have our townhome product, which varies slightly as well, but but that would be the diversity of housing. So we want to meet that per phase and then per code. Good question.
Thank you. I understand. That did clarify my mind. So then the other the other duplex would be in building C. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now I understand. Next, I would like to address, have you read the engineer's report about your application?
We have.
I understand the reasons why why it was submitted that way, but in that it's an application where, since the engineer had not signed it, the actual plans and that specifically I'm concerned is I've been in the past about drainage. So the actual plans have not been reviewed by the engineer. But he did note in there and reminded you and all the rest of us that are looking at it. And I want to make sure I get the wording correct. He reminded you and us that you will have to be in compliance in the final plans for them to be accepted to in terms of all the stormwater ordinance and policies of Garden City. And specifically with regard to retaining all the drainages for a hundred-year event will have to be retained on site. Do you understand that?
Commissioner Brown, based on the the feedback from the engineer, what we've found in past subdivision applications is if we submit a more or less finalized plan at the beginning, that changes through designer view, it may change at P and Z. And so our intent would be after this, you know, hearing, if you so choose to recommend approval, we would proceed with finalizing those and presents a more completed product to city council.
But I understand that, but you understand that what the implications of what he said there, right? Is that correct?
I do. And in addition to that, I'm familiar with a lot of the nuance floodplain and even insurance policies of of Garden City.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Hatch, I do have a couple of questions for you. So sorry to belabor the discussion on the different types of housing, but can you go back to your site plan so that we can discuss that? So I understand that in building A, you have a duplex, building C a duplex. Are all of the other units, your townhome style?
Yeah, so they would be a mix of housing types within that townhome style. So you would have two-bedroom and three-bedroom products.
Okay. And then are the duplexes anticipated to be sold? Are those rented out?
You know, to some extent, I think it's attractive from a diversity of housing to make that a townhome. And then that would be something you could live on one of the floors and rent the other floor. So I think initially that that is, you know, the intent of of what the ownership group wants to do. If the commission would make a recommendation that we actually create those as as true separate units. I believe that might even, I don't know if you can do that with a with a like a two-story type product, you would also have to like conduit or something, but I think the intent there would be you have townhomes, you have a townhome product, but you have something that, you know, if you want an entry-level type product, you could physically live there, get that homeowner's exception and absorb some rent rate to try to get yourself into Garden City.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just getting thrown off by the reference or the phrasing duplex versus townhome. So they're all townhomes. It's more of a different style of the townhome. But then within the other townhomes themselves, there's different layouts. I believe there's different sizes to, correct? Okay, so that would be potentially considered a, you know, a different offer, not just the same.
Potentially, in the past, we've 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 had some commissions agree with that. We've had others that want a distinctly different product type, so we wanted to to just do that from the get-go.
All right, thank you. Another question. So have you read the staff report, the the draft decision document and all the conditions in that document?
We have.
And then based on the conditions, it looks like there are four waivers that you're requesting. I just want to confirm that. Aside from the waivers, there's nothing else that you're looking for us to approve. So be, I mean, of course, your plat. But so one of the waivers is more than four dwelling units being served through a common drive, allowing for thirty dwelling units to be served on a common drive. The the side setbacks, the entitlement extension from one year to five years. And then the other is a demonstration that the development can be initiated within two years of the date of approval. Is there anything else that you'd be looking to change or that you have an issue within those two documents?
I mean, optimistically, I think that all sounds great, and we did want to give a realistic timeframe on phasing. If we can do it quicker, we'd like to. Sometimes construction takes longer. You know, in my mind, that third phase being out a little longer would be nice, but I think it's a stretch for me to ask this commission to do that. So no.
All right, thank you. No further questions. Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you for putting together this application, and I had a question about the thoroughfare from thirty-six to thirty-seven. On the picture, it looks like it's very, it's hard for me to see how wide that street is. Are you thinking it's going to be like like a one-way street, because there's not going to be very many cars on it, or there's like two lanes?
It currently meets code for a two-lane traffic, but it is about as narrow as we could possibly make it to do that.
Okay, I was just thinking like if that might like cut back on some of the cross-through traffic.
Yeah, we want it to not look like a road. We want to have a lot of bull bouts and humps and things that really make people go, that looks like a development. And so that was really the intent there with the shade structures, the speed humps, and the narrow profile of the road.
Okay, thank you. That was the same time to my question was to kind of get an idea of what it would look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Ms. Veal. Ms. Veal.
Mr. Chairman, are we ready?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're good. Um, all right. So this is subdivision fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash zero 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 three for Reese Town Homes. And the application consists of four separate parcels currently, which totals one point four seven four acres, acres, which is to be subdivided, subdivided, oh gosh, into a residential subdivision. Um, and planned unit development consisting of the twenty-six townhomes and two duplex units with four common lots. Uh, for a total of thirty-two lots. Um, the develop, development proposes access to the property through the common drive, um, from thirty-sixth street to thirty-seventh street. And the proposed density of the project is twenty dwelling units per acre. It is located within the C two zoning district as well as the mixed-use commercial and the transit oriented development node of the future land use designations of our comprehensive plan. A section of the planned unit development code, uh, requires that uh, every new application that proposes ten or more dwelling units needs to provide a variety of housing types. Um, code specifically states that that variety needs to include townhomes and duplexes, which are called single family detached or attached dwelling units. Um, detached units like patio homes and multifamily units. Uh, the development intends to meet the planned unit developments code by providing a variety of townhome and duplex units. Um, as we've kind of already discussed here tonight with the applicant, um, the duplex units are at least as of right now, proposed on a singular lot, um, with, so it'd be one lot with two individual units, which code would classify as a dwelling unit, single family or two family detached. Uh, whereas the other townhome units would be classified as a, um, a townhome, which is a single family attached unit. During the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, um, planning and zoning commission hearing, uh, the commission decided that they would, um, they would make the determination on the variety based off of essentially floor plans being provided. Um, different kind of housing types such as the multifamily or the single family attached or detached units. Um, but, but more specifically, like what I said, it would be the variety of floor plans being provided. Um, so discussion tonight regarding that variety being provided, um, with this subdivision is, uh, required. As a planned unit development, the applicant can and has submitted waivers to code standards. Um, as as a planned unit development, uh, they've required or requested that more than four dwelling units be served off of a common drive, allowing for the thirty units off of that common drive. They've requested that the, they can reduce the setbacks internal to the development. So as a C two zoning district, the setbacks are five feet on all sides. The subdivision as a whole would need to meet those requirements, but, um, internal to the development, the waivers for a, a rear foot, two-foot setback, um, interior side would be zero feet to allow for the common wall between properties, um, and then the front setback being three feet. And while reviewing this application, um, staff considered the, the front setback to be where the, the front doors are essentially. Um, and the rear setback being where the garage doors are, since they are on opposite sides of, um, the property. The applicant has also requested that the entitlement extension be from one year to five years to allow for proper phasing and, um, the construction of the development. And they've also requested that, um, a waiver for the demonstration that the, the development can be initiated within two years of the date of approval to allow for, um, essentially the, the final plat to be approved and for construction to be initiated. Um, so as far as the project phasing and entitlement goes, the subdivision proposes to be developed within three different phases. Um, the exact timing of these phases is yet to be determined. Um, however, they did ask for that waiver. But as a planned unit development, um, you know, they can ask for the waivers, but the waiver request for the initiation of development within two years is almost contradicting of that ability to ask for waivers. Um, so the planned unit development requires that the development be initiated within two years, but it also allows for the waivers. So, um, essentially the applicant is asking for a waiver to a planned unit development specific code requirement. Um, there have been multiple agencies who have commented on the subdivision, the first being the Garden City engineer. Um, he has made quite a few comments regarding the subdivision, um, two that are probably the most precedent here tonight would include the fact that, um, there was a conditional will serve or ability to serve letter provided on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, stating that the area is only capable of supporting fire flows of one thousand two hundred fifty gallons per minute. Um, and the existing infrastructure in the area might not be adequate enough to provide the, the fire flow necessary for such a development. If this is the case, then the developer would need to upgrade the existing infrastructure in the area to provide adequate fire flow. Some of the, the civil drawings were not submitted as part of this application. Um, however, this is a preliminary plat entitlement. So the civil plans were not required as part of the application process, um, in review. So it, the civil drawings will be required at the next step, which is a final plat application, which will come in front of this commission at a later date when they do submit. Um, so any of those civil drawing comments or concerns can be addressed at that time. But there are many conditions drafted in the decision document to ensure that the civil drawings meet not only code, but also the city engineer's comments. And then last but not least, um, I would say that this property is located in the Old Town Circulation Network um, plan, and that plan identifies a micro street running across, um, I'll call it east to west from thirty-sixth to thirty-seventh street. Um, the Old Town Circulation Network Plan identifies micro streets as a way to help circulation within the existing neighborhoods. Um, Garden City has a lot of long blocks that do not have that east to west circulation pattern. And so the, the plan, um, helps to identify those future connection points to allow for additional uh, connections and circulation, not only for vehicles, but pedestrians as well. So there is a condition drafted in the decision document to require that there is a public access easement running the entirety of the common drive being proposed in this application in accordance with that plan. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Veal. Any questions for staff? Questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We do have some signup sheets for this. So again, if you would like to testify, please make sure that you have signed up to testify. Uh, when you do testify, please make sure that you state your name and your address for the record. And, uh, so we shall begin. It looks like we have Nick. I'm sorry. I can't read your last name. McGurney?
McGarvey.
Okay. All right, Nick.
Good evening. My name is Nick McGarvey. I live at two O one West thirty-seventh, which is almost inside of this project. I am a bit surrounded, you might say. I did submit a letter of opposition and collected quite a few signatures from the community in support of what we all felt was, uh, at this point, an interesting letter of opposition, because I have to do a bit of fancy footwork because some of my concerns have apparently been addressed by an updated site plan and subdividing. But the information that we had to work with given at the, uh, neighborhood meeting in April is that we were going to see thirty, upwards of thirty units across four parcels. So I have to do a bit of on the fly speaking here. Everyone's favorite, right? I'm just going to go through my letter of opposition. And at this point, it's basically bullet points because some of the things may apply, some of the things may not apply anymore. It depends on the future of how this land gets divided significantly. So I did, we could call it a design review, a private investigator style designer view. My general findings were that the project type was misdescribed. And if this remains as four parcels, that's true, and that creates a slew of problems. Because the design requirements are significantly harder to meet if it were to be thirty units across four parcels. Now, it appears that we are going to subdivide. At least it's proposed to be that way. So that changes things somewhat. However, there's still some pretty significant deficiencies looking at the development code. And I will try to do this again on the fly and not take everyone's time. There were some open space conclusions that I analyzed and the really big kicker, and I did most of the math based on this not being subdivided because I never imagined it would be. But here we are looking at twenty-eight parcels instead of four. So my really problematic math doesn't apply assuming that we do divide this into twenty-eight parcels. However, there's still a significant, significant uh, deficiency in open space if this is designed or as, as it's designed, and if it is subdivided into twenty-eight units. I don't have the math, so I can't give you the scary numbers because I didn't bother to do it because I never imagined someone proposed to divide this into twenty-eight units. Um, if it were four parcels, it was close to a quarter acre of open space deficiency. It's not going to be as bad if subdivided, but it's there. We can do the math. It's there. My landscaping conclusions were that it would be very difficult to accommodate not only just the basic development code requirements for landscaping trees, shrubbery. But and there's a mention now we've involved an arborist that a lot of the trees are, uh, in bad shape. I would suggest that if we look closely at the trees on site, I agree, some of them are in bad shape and they deserve to go away. Uh, but for example, under building C, it's the one closest to thirty-sixth street. There is one cottonwood that's seventy-two caliper inches. And according to our Garden City landscaping code, we need to replace via tree removal mitigation up to one hundred percent of removed caliper inches. Uh, that very tree alone, which in my opinion is one of the healthiest trees in the whole project, is going to cost close to the entirety of just the basic requirements of the development code. If we ignored having to do any tree removal mitigation, we're talking about eighteen trees, we're talking about eighty-three shrubs. All of a sudden, removal of one tree, which is in the center of the floor plan proposed for building C doubles that. And now we have some numbers on the sheet indicating there's going to be a tree every fifteen feet, but if all those trees go, which they have to for building C, a significant portion of the project to be able to be built, we're looking at a hundred two-inch caliper trees. So that's assuming that we do a hundred percent tree removal mitigation. That seems harsh, but my estimate that there are two hundred mitigation calipers did not take into account the trees that are in terrible conditions, uh, the ones that are actually mostly to the south of my property. Those are bad. They're almost all bad. I agree. They should go. One of them's probably going to fall on a power line, prob- possibly this year. So yes, some of the trees are bad. Some of them are not bad. It could be the biggest cottonwood south of Chindon. It very well could be. The parking conclusions were interesting. Again, this was based off of assuming someone was not going to divide four parcels into twenty-eight. And I don't have the information in front of me because I didn't study that because I had to do this all on my own. So I don't have the numbers whether the proposed parking is even efficient or sufficient for what we're looking at now. But to quote, one of the attendees at the neighborhood meeting, there's a, there's a note in the site parking. It's a little C. And someone asked, hey, what does that C mean? Well, it means compact. And there were, if I recall right, twelve required guest parking spaces in the proposal that we were looking at. Every one of them was compact. The C stood for compact. And the person attendee who asked, what does that C mean? Oh, that means compact. He laughed and said, well, don't have friends with trucks. And it's the reason that they're all compact is because it doesn't fit. There's no physical space. As we heard, the road is as narrow as physically possible. Okay. We don't want to pave earth into oblivion, but we've got open space deficiencies. Now we got landscaping deficiencies. The parking is as tight as mathematically possible. The road is as narrow as mathematically possible. We are asking for reduced setbacks. There's a takeaway here. The floor area ratio, as we say, the FAR is very high. I suggest that it's too high. Okay. We've got a unit count. But there are other ways to achieve that density. We're taking up a lot of space. We're ignoring certain basic development code issues here. Hoping we can get through no tree mitigation. Um, it doesn't fit is what this all boils down to. I had some traffic ideas. It's very interesting that we can do this. What was it called? Micro street? Um, that was a new concept to me as of five minutes ago. And I'm all for connectivity. But I don't know that letting traffic flow through is going to be very nice to the people who are going to buy or rent these units. I don't know that two speed humps is going to effectively slow people down. Um, this is very, very near Chindon and Orchard and or thirty-sixth street. And as a resident on two O one West thirty-seventh, I can tell you that intersection backs up. Um, I had difficulty getting here at six PM. Conceivably well after rush hour. Conceivably well after rush hour. It backs up multiple blocks east and west from the light at Orchard, coming down the hill. We've got a one-way entering on Thirty-S sixth. We've got a no entry. You're going the wrong way if you enter from the south and get to the entrance on Thirty-S sixth. So that's interesting. We've got a one-way exiting on Brown Street out to Orchard that heads to Chindon. You don't get to go up Orchard legally. And you don't get to approach the site coming north on Thirty-S sixth legally. You don't get to leave going north on Thirty-S sixth legally. There's some nuance there that is really gonna cause some issues. I think since I'm just flying by the seat of my pants here with some possibly outdated information, since we're gonna subdivide to twenty-eight lots, I've exhausted my analysis and I will take a seat. Thank you.
Sir. Mr. Hatch, I see yours, but as the applicant, I'll go ahead and you'll have the opportunity for rebuttal. Looks like we have another from Zachary Medic. Thank you, Mr. Medic. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I am Zachary Medic. My address is two fourteen West Thirty-S sixth Street and two sixteen West Thirty-S sixth Street. So I've been a resident there since my whole life, watched the whole Garden City develop insanely out of control. Looking at the road structures on the east side, when the school buses can't turn around and do their duties, it's so overwhelming looking at how tight all the properties are crammed together. I'm not opposed to having a few new neighbors. Twenty-eight is a little bitch on the upside. I think four would be great. We are in Garden City. This project has no yard value at all. If you have a kid, I guess you got a few feet out the back door. Other than that, go find the park. I've got a yard. Maybe I can charge admission. The traffic problem is quite crazy. Tonight, within an hour, I watched four cars come down Thirty-S sixth Street, pass the entrance to our project, turn around and then go back, figure out they see the wrong way sign and go, oh, I can't go here. So they'll turn around and the solar panels, the next building, which is open. Now, there is that wrong way sign. Is Ada County gonna redo the road to make that a two-way so they can enter that project? I'm telling you, there are so many trucks that come in and people ask, how do you get out of here? So that will be an access road to get out. And I will be telling people you can go right up there and go over to Thirty-Seventh Street. It's a new access. You're gonna have your new town home apartment, what is that, seven-story structure going in? You're gonna have two hundred units going in on Thirty-Seventh and Thirty-Eight. You're gonna have a ton of traffic there. That'll be a great driveway for them to sneak over to Thirty-S sixth, go under the Orchard Bridge and get out on the other side of that Orchard Light and head downtown. Granted, Garden City needs some extra roads because they didn't really plan on it when Davis scraped out the side roads. So yeah, I'm really opposed to the traffic thing. When they come out there, people are already going up the wrong way. The other week or two ago, they had a tuckware party at the end of the street and five cars drove right up the wrong way into the oncoming traffic. Good timing because it was after seven thirty, eight o'clock. There wasn't a lot of traffic flow, so. But granted, when traffic is heavy, there'll be people wanting to come out of there and I'm sure they'll wanna sneak out to get up out to Orchard instead of go around Thirty-S sixth. And it'll be also new access for anybody living on Thirty-Seventh. They can come under the Orchard Bridge and go right through their neighborhood eventually and go right to their Thirty-Seventh Street side. So yeah, it is a road. I don't know if that's Ada County's plan to make that a thoroughfare. Are they gonna name it like the alleyways they did on the other side? I don't know. That's not, I guess I don't get answers back here. Yeah, it's, it, four houses would be great with yard and they could have space for a dog. And then everybody could have their own space to clean up their dog poop instead of going down to the end of the street, parking and walking on the canal. So we do have that little common strip and that will be like the park for those kids living in the complex. Okay, my time's probably up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do have another sheet, but I believe that it's for the other item. So just to confirm, Alan Page, you're not looking to testify on this item, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public here to testify on this item? All right, I don't see anybody else at this time. All right, Mr. Hatch, time for your rebuttal, please.
Evening commissioners. Thank you again for your consideration for subdivision application. I was gonna address one of the considerations that was brought up with Hannah Veal and then touch on some of the neighbors' comments. And then if there are any other questions, feel free to field those as well. Hannah concerned, had mentioned a concern about fire flows in this area. Working, especially with like Burt's Brewery across the way, they have like no sewer access, no water. It was like a barren piece of land. And so we had to run a sewer extension, water main extension, fire suppressed that particular building. I'm intimately familiar with the sewer system in Thirty-S sixth Street because, because of my, my building backflowing because of some concerns there. Not the most pleasant thing, but all that to be said, we are working with the water district to see as additional developments are coming in this area, if there is a solution that could either be a joint venture amongst developments to improve fire flow. It has increased a little bit in the last five years, which is encouraging. But we are monitoring that and for our final plat, we will ensure that that meets code with our civil plans. As far as the concerns for Mr. McGarvey and Mr. Medic, there was some overlap. So we had concerns of open space, landscaping and trees, parking concerns, traffic, and then Mr. Medic had also expressed some concerns for open space and traffic concerns. We feel that really all those are, our intent would be to, to meet the, in the Garden City code and process that through design review and through this hearing process. And at this time, don't always agree with, with Hannah, but I believe that that is kind of the, the task of staff is to review this in relationship to code, weigh the agencies and provide findings to both P and Z and City Council. And it's our task to address those concerns as, as they're interpreted. We're more than happy to, to take any additional feedback or reviews that Hannah has from those. And if we need to address anything on those plans, more than happy to coordinate with her. Lastly, I, I, I think it is probably worth and maybe even having a discussion with Mr. Medic as far as Thirty-S sixth Street, if it makes sense that that would be two-way traffic, that may be a discussion with him. The property owners along Thirty-S sixth Street and also ACHD. Part of me thinks it doesn't make sense to do that because then we're, we're promoting more traffic on that street. And I don't know if that's a benefit to Mr. Medic, those neighbors and ACHD. I could see that the connectivity with Thirty-Seventh Street seems to be both a code compliance thing, but also a mobility thing that is beneficial. But I'm very much open to the neighbors' feedback and ACHD's comments and the city's as far as what is the best circulation path. And I do feel that there is some flexibility there. So I, I know that that'll all get sorted out through the final plat process as well, but definitely open to this commission's feedback at this time. And I'll stand for any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I have just one question. Can you just tell me, I'm having a little trouble orienting myself on the the blueprints, the, the exception to the setback, the three-foot. It sounds like front, front door, I guess, setback. Can you just explain that a little bit more, why the exception's necessary?
In a town-owned configuration, I don't know if you're familiar with our, our project on State Street in Bogart. As a fairly large project that had a range of setback exceptions. Based on the configuration of a site, you will have property lines that abut structures. So we have town home on the end. We have adjacent town home that's attached to that structure next to it. The waivers of those setbacks would be on, on either side where you're actually physically attached to the next building. So that would be a zero lot line configuration.
Sure. And the three-foot one, what is that in reference to? The reduction that, and maybe, and correct me if I'm just reading it wrong, but it looks like it's a reduction. Is it from five feet to three feet?
Believe that's what Hannah stated, yes.
Okay, so what is that reduction? I understand the zero ones because there's just simply no space there at all, but, but the, the five-foot reduction to three feet. Can you explain that one just a little more?
Do you know where that one's located, Hannah?
I believe that's a front setback.
Yeah, I think it is.
Internal setbacks.
So it'd be an internal front setback. So I believe that would be on the bottom of the townhomes that face north where we have a, a front setback on the side adjacent to our property line for the common access drive, like where we have our trash enclosure and also our side landscape island. So you have a property line that is a common parcel for, for the, for the, are we calling it private drive or, or drive access? So we'd have our, our, our town home that goes north and south. And then our property line on the south of that, it's an adjacency to that townhome.
Okay. So is the, is the necessity of the exception just simply the size of the building or, I, I think I'm still, I'm still.
It's, yeah, it's based on the configuration of the site plan and, and essentially where the, the property boundaries are.
Mr. Smith, would you like for there to, for staff to put up the site plan?
That's what I was hoping. And then maybe if you could just arrow, that would help me understand that particular exception. Thank you. I'm a visual person, so.
Do we need to share this again? Thank you, Commissioner Smith. So the proposed front setback along the southern property line, which would be the front setback, we have the, we have the property line of the parcel, we have the landscape buffer, the, the pathway, which would be the pedestrian pathway. That's all on a common lot. So you're in a subdivision, so similar to if you had a parcel adjacent to a sidewalk, like a greenbelt sidewalk. Our, our exception would be two feet off of a, a five-foot public sidewalk and a five-foot setbacks. We were meeting the physical designer view setbacks. The requirement of having this pulled back an additional two feet. You're, you're already eighteen feet off of the proper, the physical property line. So that's why we're requesting that particular waiver of two feet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shepard.
Mr. Chair, I have another question. If you could just leave that out.
Sure.
So Mr. Hatch, the front of the buildings is not, it's like the private driveway is what we're talking about from like the thoroughfare, we're calling it, going through Thirty-S sixth to Thirty-Seventh. So that's gonna be, this is where I'm confused. It's a private driveway, but it's a public easement, like public access. The city's gonna require that. But it's gonna be on the back of the people's houses, those houses. Am I understanding that correctly?
The private drive would be towards, would be perceived as the back because that's where you would have access for vehicles. You know, you also have a nice views of bogus from that side. So the proposed master bedrooms would be on the second floor, you know, kind of also facing in that direction. So it would be the rear of the building on the ground floor, but uh, would be a more, you know, potentially depending if you like sunsets or morning views, be a nice second floor.
Okay, so there's, so there's like gonna be a three-foot, you're asking for a three-foot in the front. So that's like at the bottom of the screen. How do the people access it? Like guests, everyone's gonna access the properties from the private driveway, it looks like, but the fronts of the buildings as far as like the front door goes, that's gonna be in the front, like around the bottom of the.
Yes, we wanted to, Commissioner Shepard, we did want a distinct separation between that common access drive, which may get elongated and connected in the future and our actual pedestrian access. So the, the pedestrian access from the town-owned building A is off of Thirty-Seventh. Pedestrian access for Thirty-S sixth is off of Thirty-S sixth to building C. And then in addition to that, we have additional walking paths that if you wanted to go to the, the fronts of these buildings, we would have access to each of those individually as well throughout the development.
So in the back of it, where the people are, where that private drive is, how far is that from? Like how far are the cars gonna be from the homes? And I know it's probably in here, like it's just hard for me to visualize it with all the different blueprints that are given. Can you, it's gonna, like where does the street end and the house begin?
Well, the actual street would be, you know, the width of the street would be here. And so we're providing additional, you know, two to three feet for backup clearance. This would be similar to, trying to think of a, I know there's one off of State Street and also similar to our McCarthy Town Home product, which is actually less backup space than this project.
So Mr. Hatch, where your cursor is right now, next to parcel two, yep, what's the distance between the back of the garage to the island?
Twenty-four feet.
Okay.
And you.
Does that help, Commissioner Shepard? So you see where it says phase two and you have the distance marked between building C and the landscape island? Can you circle that with your?
Yeah, so we can by code go down to twenty-two feet. We're at twenty-two, six here at these bulbouts where we want to calm traffic where we have those speed humps. And then we widen back out to twenty-four for backup clearance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Commissioner Shepard?
No, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from the rest of the commissioners?
Just a quick one, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hatch.
Just a quick one, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Hatch, um, I'm, I'm looking at the rather extensive word of cultureist review that you had done, I guess, a couple of years ago. Mr. McGarvey mentioned one very large tree and a hundred percent city code obligation for replacement. If, if I'm reading everything right, the ninety or a hundred shrubs plus the trees that are intended to be planted pursuant to the landscaping plan you've submitted does meet the code requirement and met the design review obligations.
I'm not a certified art risk commissioner, Wild. Don't claim to be. Yeah, but he is and he's third party and we had to pay him to do that.
Right.
And use his recommendations, give that to city. We interpreted it one way and interpreted it another way. And the designer view interpreted it in additional different way. And we had to coordinate with both city and, uh, you know, city, uh, elected officials to come to a resolution for design review. And so we, we feel that we've satisfied that. Uh, I'm sure Hannah will review that in relationship to the neighbors' comments. And if there are additional concerns, we can certainly address that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hatch, I do have a question for you. On the waiver for the development to be initiated within two years, is your concern? What's your concern with that?
Great, great question, Commissioner Montoya. It's a little convoluted, but, um, what I have found in construction, and people ask me all the time, how long is it gonna take to get my building? I've, I find that we're always wrong. And so I wanted to try to give, um, the ownership group flexibility to try to achieve things in a realistic manner. Working on the timeline of recent subdivision applications in Garden City, we've found that it takes a little longer than that two-year span uh, to achieve the, the first portion. So we're asking for, for a waiver to extend that slightly or, or waive that. And then that phasing allows us the additional, um, so they, they kind of overlap. But one of them's more of the getting to a point where we can do the construction. And the other waiver is to elongate the phasing. That's really the objective of that.
And so we have the entitlement extension from one year to five years. And then we have the, that the development can be initiated within two years. So are you thinking that?
And that buys us additional time for the final plat.
All right, thank you. And then going back to the private road or what people are calling the thoroughfare. Is, and I believe that I heard you correctly, that that is not, so you're not looking for waiver on that. You see that there is a condition within the decision document. I haven't heard necessarily, or maybe I missed it. If that's something that you like, you don't like, would you like it to be the public easement dedicated for use for public traffic?
Candidly, I want what's best for Garden City. So if Garden City wants that as a designated connection opportunity in the future. To the best of my knowledge, you, you know, Garden City really doesn't have an opportunity like that very often at all. So the fact that this is something that they've set up in code and this applies to one of the unique conditions, by all means.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
One more.
Commissioner.
And I promise I'm not trying to harp on this three foot thing, but let me just ask one more question that might solve my, my thought process. If we didn't approve the exception to that three and create that three foot setback, how would that change your design? Would it force smaller units or fewer units? Or would it not change anything with the units?
Instead of having eighteen feet off of the perceived property line, we would have twenty feet and you would have smaller units.
Okay, smaller or fewer?
Yeah, correct.
Because you'd have to expand wide instead of. So we're effectively, by granting that exception, we're effectively increasing the density or forcing smaller units? Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Hatch.
Thank you.
Having heard public testimony, the applicant and staff will now close the public hearing. This matter will be before the commission and we are recommending body on this matter. So I will open up to the commissioners, Commissioner Smith.
Um, Mr. Chair, I, I share the neighborhood's concerns that it, it does feel like this development is maybe bursting at the seams a little bit is, is a good way to describe it. I, I feel disinclined to grant a setback exception, other than obviously the internal zero ones that are required to build townhomes. But it seems like by granting what seems like a very small difference, just a two-foot difference, but it allows, it allows more density. And I, I would think that maybe if we didn't do that, it would reduce the number built of townhomes, which might alleviate some of the concerns of the, the neighborhood. So that was my, my initial thought. And I haven't quite sorted out my, my other thoughts yet because I've been a, a little focused on that. Stick with that comment.
All right, Commissioner Wild?
Um, I, um, I share some of Commissioner Smith's concerns about, uh, the density. And, uh, even some of the neighbors' concerns about, um, open space and, and traffic concerns. I don't think the landowner or Mr. Hatch made the traffic the way it is. Thirty-six is an awkward little. We've got some unique streets in Garden City and this just happens to be one of them. So, so I do have some concerns about density. I think Commissioner Smith's idea is an intriguing one. But I, uh, I am supportive generally of the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three areas of concern that I want to, I will comment on. And, and then I will sort of a condition that I would like that would resolve in me supporting this. The first one I want to address is the problems of the traffic. There, there's no doubt in that little area, there is already a terrible traffic problem. It has to do with the way Garden City was put together, uh, back when we took Orchard and put it down to Chindon. When the highway district did that, it resulted in that configuration that is there. And the narrow streets that are in there. So it leaves a, a really tricky, I would characterize it as a tricky situation. But that would be true for whatever you put in there. It's already an issue. And as to how it can be fixed, or if it would be alleviated. Number one, I support the condition that is already put in there to keep it open as a, a, for the public access. You know, if, if we don't have that, then they could make it a totally private street. Put gates up on it and that really would result in, in an increase of the problem of connectivity in there. So my thoughts on traffic, exactly if, if we recommend approval is what we put in there is about all we can do. And the other thing's having to do with whether you convert thirty-six to two-way from a one-way. That has, that's totally up to the highway district. And, uh, I won't give any conjecture what they would talk about with regard to that. The traffic guys would over there would have to deal with that. So that's my comment on the traffic. Second, uh, has to do with the issue of, uh, that we've talked about before, that we keep can doing and having to do with the fact that we're closed in, in Garden City and we're doing infill projects. And so on PUDs with more than ten units, we're stuck with this issue of a variety of housing because that's what code says. And this is a little bit different. In fact, I would say it's unique. And tell the, Mr. Hatch explained to me exactly how the configuration was gonna be of the so-called duplexes. And, and you clarified it also by what, pointing out really, yes, under that phasing that he did, they would be considered duplexes. But they're also townhomes in the, the configuration that they have from those. But we have approved other developments that marginally don't have any more differentiation than what this does, in my opinion. So I am not, I'm gonna accept what they're proposing to do. It's solving that problem. That brings me to the third one, and that was pointed out by Hannah. And that is, there's a lot of stuff, given the fact that it is a little bit crowded. It's a whole lot crowded, given they have to do. And if you read that engineer's report, because of, and I understand why they, they are reluctant at this point to give us a step, a stamp sale plans and what they're gonna do. But I'm gonna be really interested in what they finally come up with on fitting the things that are required by the engineer into that development. And the primary one that I'm concerned about is I've been in, in many others in this area of Garden City, has to do with drainage. So I, and I talked to Hannah about this. And, uh, if you all want to, you don't need to, I'll quote it from you. I'm really concerned about, the engineer's gonna really have a challenge containing all of the drainage in this, given how large the units are relative to the space. And it has to do with open space requirements and the landscaping that's gotta be put in there. And exactly how he's gonna put together a drainage plan that will retain the water on site. So Hannah addresses this in two of her requirements. And for me to support a recommendation of forwarding it, I would be proposing, and hopefully the, the rest of the commissioners would understand it. She addresses the stormwater requirements that are cited by the engineer in requirement number twelve uh, to be accomplished prior to the construction, I think it's in that category. It's all right where the cock, where it is, it's in the, but it's number twelve. And what it says is currently all stormwater systems must comply with Garden City Code eight dash four, eight dash seven. And I'm not in any way criticizing Hannah. This is what we provided and we've been using this on, for a long time, this particular requirement. But if you go to eight dash four, eight dash seven, it does not address the big issue of retention of stormwater for a hundred-year event, uh, on site. It's not, it's not part of the requirements in that. So I would, and I would like, uh, for Jenna and Hannah to look at this in the future when we have this type of a development where we don't have at this stage, you know, at preliminary plat stage, uh, plans for dealing with it, with the drainage. I would like to have that condition strengthened by doing the following. Striking the period and put the following, and this comes right out of the engineer's report. And it would read, "All stormwater systems must comply with Garden City Code eight dash four, eight dash seven and other stormwater ordinances and policies, period. Drainage must be retained on site." And that's exactly the way, uh, Mr. Canning addressed it. And you can read what Hannah put in here as a requirement, because later on in number fourteen, she says, "All agency comments, including but not limited to the city engineer and North Ada County Fire and Rescue District shall be addressed." That actually covers that when you realize what it says, but as you know, I'm, I'm quite interested in the drainage issues. And I would like to see us strengthen that requirement by putting that little bit that I added up into number twelve. If we did that and strengthen that up, then I'm prepared to recommend, uh, I recommend approval with, and along with all the other conditions that the hand has already put in.
See how you just volunteered to make the motion when we get there?
Sure.
Anything further, Commissioner Brown?
No, no, that, that's, that's my comments.
Commissioner Shepard?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I also echo a lot of what Commissioner Smith said about the size of it. I, I just, I'm I'm having some like the way I, I like, I feel for the neighbors and their concerns with the density and the traffic pattern. And I also understand that it's not the landowners. You know, they didn't create the traffic pattern situation. Uh, I feel a little bit like the private roadway between like a home and then that, that access to their garage is worried about like safety and a lot of people crossing on like a road where people will be. But I, I also trust that there's gonna be the speed humps and the traffic diversions. So hopefully traffic will be slow on that road. And that, I think that some of that stuff will also be addressed in later applications as the, as several division is, is developed. I accept the divi, the diversity of housing, the way you have it set up and that, the size of that lot as far as the different, um, studios and sizes of the, of the townhomes. Um, and I hope some of the issues with the fire flows and the stormwater can be resolved in the final stages, um, like the final plat stage. Because I do think that's an issue, that there needs to be enough pressure in the water for the fire department. And that's, that's what I have as far as like, just echoing what other, other commissioners have said. Just as a recommending body, I think I would recommend moving forward with it, um, with the hope that some of this can be resolved in the future with the, with the final plat stage.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepard. Commissioner Brown, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I, well, if, if, if we're, before we go in, it's apparently I've been elected to, by my fellow commissioner over here to put it together. So I, I need to go back and address Commissioner Smith's comment. If at this point, my, my, I, I need to address the other wave, all the waivers. I would be thinking at this point, if I did it, I would be willing to grant them the waivers that they asked for, including the five years, which was the one was mentioned. I would put that in there and I would not, uh, I would allow the request for the additional two feet. I understand exactly what you're saying, but I don't see that by not granting that, we will result in any actual change. It would, what he said, he, it would probably result in them, those units that are all along our, those, those, but there are three buildings there, right? Those buildings, they would just be smaller units is what would happen. We would still wind up with the same number of people that are living there. We'd have the same number of cars. So, and the, and the streets on the other side from those. So at this time, I'm thinking that if I, when I make the motion, I will be recommending approval, including all the requests for the waivers as it's printed in the decision document. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. From my perspective, uh, I do like the design. It seems like this is about as much density as you can get in this type of situation. From my perspective, the land unit development code does reference, um, increasing density. And this is why that's part of that. I do agree with what Commissioner Brown said regarding the setback. And the way that I'm looking at it might be a little bit different than Commissioner Smith in the sense of the setbacks based on the common lot boundary, which shrinks it as opposed to the actual boundary line of the existing parcel, which then you have the eighteen feet versus the three feet. So I, I. I I too. Agree with Commissioner Brown on that, that I'm not concerned with it. I do have some concerns on waiver three D, which is regarding the. Uh demonstration that the development can be initiated within two years of the date of approval. Specifically that we heard Ms. Veal say that that could be contrary to the P U D code. And I would wanna make sure that with that waiver, we're not violating any code or that we can even waive that. So I probably need some help on that to make sure that we're not proving anything that we can't. The biggest issue that I have is really the private street. I'm not a fan of imposing easements on private property unless it's a necessity, and so I have an issue with that. Um I also have an issue that if we start creating thoroughfares within subdivisions, that it's gonna be a disaster. I've used that street. I've actually gone past Mr. Hatch's office, and I could only imagine if people are trying to shortcut through there. And it's at a traffic jam, or if there's some reason why traffic's backing up and you have backing up of. Cars in that private drive, what kind of havoc that's gonna cause on the. The people that actually own the units, if they're trying to get out of their garages, or if they're blocked in on the compact side. Um as well as people. Cutting through there at speed, and if people do have kids, that that's just gonna create more danger, so. I'm not sure that I like that as an alternative if A C H D or someone else wants to impose some sort of requirement, then. So be it, but I just, I don't see that that is a safe way to get. People across the the property. Of course, if you're using it to access your own. Lot, then that's one thing, but. Having the public use that as a way to get from thirty six to thirty seven just seems like a mess for me, so. That would be one concern that I have. I think you even mentioned it seems like a safety issue. It's twenty four feet wide. It's not like it's that wide, and trying to get people to get through there just doesn't seem like a good idea for me, so. I would probably agree with the other commissioners, except for. The requirement in the decision document under three E four. Which is the requirement for a public easement dedicated to the city to ensure cross connection is maintained indefinitely. I think if the developer wants to have that, they can have it, but for us to require an easement, I wouldn't be um in favor of that, so. Aside from that, I would agree with the other conditions and. Agree with the other comments from the commissioners. Any other comments from the commission at this point?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't think, I don't have a comment, so I got a couple. Need to follow up about your comment. If we don't do that. And what are we saying? And then then we have a a private, it's gonna be there, they're not planning to put a gates. Then you then you really have, I think you're opening up a real problem because. I live on a street. It's over behind D and B off of there. Okay, we have a private street, and that's the reason that we have a gate on it. And there's a gate there by D and B, Sons of Amalane. So that all the traffic trying to avoid Glenwood and State wouldn't go through there. That's why they put a put a gate there. But it's a private street, so. If you don't. If we don't require them to put an easement to the public then. I think the public's still gonna be using it like that.
Sure, and and I don't disagree with you, but they would have other ways to be able to potentially prohibit people cutting through. Uh I I would say that the developers should have the opportunity if it wants to to control traffic. And unless there's some sort of requirement for safety, like. Access for the fire department or for emergency services that are requiring it, that if it becomes a safety concern, that the developer should have the opportunity to close it down.
Well, let me comment on that. Uh and since we live on this street, it's got a gate. The safety issue about firing that, that's easily taken care of. Uh you you put an optocom system on the gate uh with the fire department, so that. And all it also applies to ambulance and those things, so that that can be taken care of by them if they wanted it. So you would be saying that, well, if we did this. If we didn't require it, then what we're saying is the developer, it's up to him what he wants to do with regard to that private street. That he has on whether he can allow people free access, or is that what we're saying?
I'm, so I'm just, I'm thinking there, right? So we're working it together, so. So I'm thinking that there's gonna be a homeowner's association that's probably gonna have. The ability to vote on if that was a private street to close it or keep it open. And more than likely, you're gonna have some sort of required majority or some number of the residents that are gonna say yes or no. And so there could also be requirements from the other agencies on access points. If you have to have more than one access point in and out, which I'm guessing you probably will. Which would mean that you would have to have that spot space remain open if the agency is saying that you have to have access from two different points. So, and I don't know if we can condition that the developer as part of the approval would be required to maintain two access points. But. That's where I would be at.
I'd really be interested before I make a motion that what the other commissioners think about this particular issue, because that'll affect what I say.
I'd be more concerned about it if the landowner. The developer and Mr. Hatch were here opposing. They're not. So I think this is our issue more than their issue. So um I would continue to ask that that be. Imposed, I guess, it is an imposition.
As as a public access.
Yep.
Uh and I I might, that's why I'm along with that, and I might. Some of us have been, Matt and I have been on here longer, so we we remember. Uh when we put together that street plan, that is. As a as a so-called micro-street connectivity in a plan that we adopted a long time ago. I can't remember, I I couldn't tell you how long ago, but that that is in the plan, and the idea was that have. To try and provide access because of those long blocks and stuff that were in the original town plan for Garden City. And that was the plan, so in that sense, I I'm with I'm with Matt, I think.
Mr. Chair. Uh I I agree with the general idea that. We shouldn't condition easements on private property, I think um. I think just because the developer didn't ask for it doesn't necessarily mean that we can't consider it, and I think that. It's an anticipatory issue that. If we decide to remove it as a condition, it creates maximum flexibility for the developer. The developer can always. Dedicate the roadway. To the county if if the developer wants to, so that's an option. Um the county would have to accept it, which is a complex process.
Excuse me, excuse me a second. Not that, that's not an option. Uh Ada County Highway District will will not ever accept it because it cannot meet the standards for a public road. It would have to be way wider. Alright, way wider, it would have to have sidewalks on both sides, and it would have to have a capability. Of of hooking up to drainage to the public drainage system. And so there, once this gets built to the configuration they have, Highway District would never, never accept it as a public street.
See, I appreciate the correction, man. Uh I don't believe that changes my ultimate opinion, though, that I think it's an unnecessary. Condition, and I would leave it up to the developer, but I don't have strong enough feelings to prevent it. About it first.
Um, Mr. Chair, my feelings on this, I I I don't really, I don't like the small street. I don't know if it's possible to put up like. Know through traffic or private resident access only signs, and I know that people will probably ignore those. But it might persuade some people, at least maybe lower the amount of people going through there who don't live there. And I don't, I guess I just don't know enough like how much it's of its A D A C H D, like what they have to say about it. Because if you're saying that A C H D would never even approve it as like a a regular street.
They will never accept it.
And it's just my Garden City saying, we're gonna make this easement be a public access. I mean, I I think it would be okay for it to be like pedestrians and bicyclists' public access. I don't necessarily like the idea of hundred. I don't know how many, maybe they could do a traffic study, cars going through there every day in such a small environment, you know? I just um. That's why I was saying before that I was would hope that these kind of things can be discussed more and maybe leveraged more in. Future discussions, because. I mean, if it meets code and we are. I mean, the way I read it, Garden City is going to require the easement, so we can, as a commission, say that we aren't gonna require it. I mean, I also agree that leaving the that as an option to the developer would be my like feeling that we should do. Because that will give them the most flexibility and the homeowners association that you mentioned.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepard, and. You uh you said something that triggered me, which was that A C H D would never approve this as a road, so I'm wondering why would we even advocate for it to be used as a road?
It's an access.
But it's a road, how, but you're still using it to get from one place to another, so I'm just, what's the distinction that we're saying? Like, the public can't use it, but it can use it.
Um, Mr. Hatch, this is my response to your thoughtful question, which is, Mr. Hatch and his clients have considered this issue. Are going to do things to that road to slow down traffic, to discourage greatly discourage traffic. I'm not going over one of those speed bumps. I'm not gonna cut through there when I, I mean, effectively, that's what they ought to do, I mean. So. It's it's not one to use as a thoroughfare, to use kind of. A C H D jargon. It's gonna be used occasionally for somebody who doesn't know where they are, and they need to get from. Here to over there, and oh my God, there's a there's a way through there. This looks like a private road. I probably need to get off this as soon as I can. I think that's effective in what it's gonna look like.
I think that maybe it comes from a over-govermenting perspective. If there's an agency that requires this, then then excellent, but what is our justification for requiring it? As as a recommending body. Wha- what are we trying to improve? Are we trying to improve health and safety? Are we trying to improve traffic flow? What is our justification? And if we can't justify it, then then perhaps we leave it to an agency that can justify it, rather than doubling up the requirement.
Two comments on that. First of all, not directly on that, but but so that. Everybody understands where I'm coming from with regard to how definitive I I responded with A C H D. I was the manager of engineering at A C H D for seventeen years. Their regulation about what is required to accept a previously private street. A previous private street for that's required for it to become a public street. I'm the one that wrote it, okay? And 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 wrote the requirement, so that's why I can pretty definitively tell you, and it's it it's too small and a lot of other things. For them ever to accept it. Uh once it's it's in that configuration, and because of the buildings are being so close. And there's only room there for about twenty four feet. So it just would not be ever acceptable. So now, as to what we are trying to do and why it was written in there is because of, I can't remember the the name of the plan, uh Hannah wrote it in there. But we put a plan in, in fact, it was, it's not a definitive code kind of thing. It's it's an objective thing of why how we were gonna try and improve connectivity throughout on both sides of Chinon. It's got some by having interim micro roads, I think is what it said, they had a name. That we that were put in motionally, overlay the whole city. It's not, it's not a zone or anything. And that was the objective to increase connectivity, so that people didn't have to go so far to go to the next street over. So it is, it is a a, I guess I would call it a planning document. We might ask Jenna, she might help me out a bit. But that that's the reason, that's the objective of why it was put in there. Uh it wasn't, it wasn't to alleviate traffic so much as to increase increase the connectivity. So people didn't have to go so far from one street to to get to the other street in those areas.
It just feels like we're crossing concepts a little bit, though, because it's the private road that the homeowners here are going to have to pay to maintain. So then we say we're trying to increase connectivity, but let's fill it with roadblocks that people don't wanna use it for connectivity. But then why are we using it to increase connectivity if we're gonna discourage use at that point? Why grant the easement at all? I I guess is how I'm 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 viewing it. It it seems like we have two conflicting goals. And neither of them are really. Working. It it's not gonna be a connective road, but yet it's still gonna have this easement burdening it that we've created.
And just one more item, um even though Mr. Hatch, it doesn't sound like he has really much of a preference. I I did thought that the public did say they weren't in favor of the group there. Um it could be mistaken, but it just, it did sound like there was some concerns from the public on having traffic go through there as well. And just the confusion already, so.
Well, at one of the things that I didn't address that I will also that was pointed out. Uh these aren't, it's not just gonna be, these are not gonna be little speed bumps. Like you would see in a in a parking lot like at Albertson's or something like that. These are gonna be where they have their crosswalks, where they put their sidewalks. They're gonna be. Uh they're actually called speed humps that are in there, which which rise up more than a a speed bump. And then the sidewalk's gonna be on top of those, and there'll be two of them on either side of that road, the T-shaped road where the hammerhead is. Uh that are gonna be there, plus they're gonna have bulbouts and the curves where he pointed out there where the planters gonna be. Which is gonna constrict the road. That's a a very, that's called a traffic calming measure, which we've tried in other places. Uh so it does, what it does is it slows the traffic down. And and they will slow the traffic down there, and it does just what Matt said. It makes people after they've done it a couple times, they don't do that anymore. They go another way. But so anyway, that's my thoughts of that. So I still think it's a good idea. I would like to do it, but I can see I can see your points of view. So let me do some adding. You're in favor of not doing it? Of not requiring the easement, the public easement for the public.
Well, it's a difficult one, because I also agree with Commissioner Wild that the the applicant isn't fighting it. So and the city is requiring it. I hadn't really thought about it before we started having this conversation. So if I have to make a decision now, yes, I'm in favor of not requiring easement.
You're in favor of not doing it?
Correct.
She's in favor of not doing it. So they're only two.
Been interesting, well.
Yeah. So, well, I'm thinking in terms of of the emotion.
Well, I mean. Not to, I mean. This is a little more of a philosophical debate that we're having here.
Right.
About private property rights.
Yeah.
I mean, the role of government and. We're not here to talk about the code until August. But, you know, on a bigger scale, you know, let's do away with open space, right? I mean, why are we making private property owners commit open space to their development?
Good point.
Why are we requiring them to put trees and shrubs? I mean, if, so I I think. We live in Garden City, and Garden City has, all we see is funky infill. That's all we see. And Mr. Hatch gets a lot of the funky infill. And every once in a while, we have a public easement like this. We, I can't remember the last time we saw something that was like this.
Every access, every time we require access to the greenbelt and the pathway system.
Yeah.
We're doing a similar thing, that it's not for cars, but every time that we, we, and we've had lots of developments over on the other side, where we require them to provide access to the greenbelt and access to a, to the pathway system that connects to the greenbelt. And that's the same issue.
I guess I would say, I don't, I don't think we're necessarily overstepping our authority if we were to require this. I, I think I'm just not seeing the point. It, it feels like a, a requirement for the sake of a requirement, because if it's not going to be used as a throughway and discouraging it from being used as a throughway, then why are we creating? That, I, I think it's more of a practical argument than it is an authority argument. I, I agree that I, I certainly don't see it as any different than any other beneficial measures we add to these, to these conditions, I'm just not convinced it's a beneficial measure.
Well. I think, if you, if you, if you want me to, I, I would be, if, if we, I'd sort of exhaust the discussion, I would be prepared to, to put forth a, a motion.
So I did have a question and just a point of order, if I can ask staff a clarifying question on waiver three D, on whether or not there is any issue with waiving the two-year requirement for.
Uh, Chairman, that's an interesting question. In the P U D ordinance itself, it does say that you have to demonstrate that the, the development can be initiated in a two-year timeframe. And then the P U D ordinance says that you can waive conditions or waive, uh, components of the code, and it does not specify what you can waive and what you can't waive. Um, in the past, staff has toiled with can you waive conditions found within the P U D requirements as part of that waiver, and so there's not a clear-cut answer that we can give to you on that.
Okay. And the discussion of the public easement. It's, it's a difficult one, because I also don't wanna hold up the application. Um, and the applicant hasn't said that he, that's the reason why I asked that question, whether there is any conditions outside of like, he's also already asked for a waiver. Um, and he didn't say that that was an issue, so it's. Yeah, okay. We're gonna get a motion from you?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
I move that we recommend approval to subdivision F Y twenty twenty-four, number three, Reese Town Homes. Uh, preliminary plat process as a planned unit development. In accordance with the draft records of decision, which includes defining the facts, record of decision and, and, and requirements. With the following modifications. I would approve all of the waivers that were requested as they are printed. On requirement number twelve, under, that would be under the first set of requirements, I guess, let me see what the title of that part of it is. Those would be, uh, prior to approval of construction plans. Uh, number twelve, I would add, and by the way, I will, I will pass this over with the right exact wording I'm gonna put on this, Hannah. I've written it on here, Nick. Uh, the number twelve, I would vary that requirement to read. All stormwater systems must comply with Garden City Code eight dash four, eight dash seven and other stormwater ordinances and policies. Drainage must be retained on site. And that's the only thing that we said we were gonna change. Right?
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Wild, it's been moved in second for the deliberation on this matter.
Mister, Mister, so did we decide as a commission not to move to easement?
The, the current motion is not.
Current motion is not, it leaves it like it is written.
All right, we have a, a motion from Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Wild. No further deliberation, Commissioner Shepherd. Okay. We'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. No, I'm sorry.
Any nos? No?
No.
We have three yeses, two nos. So we have majority. All right. We have it, Mr. Hatch. Thank you.
That's, I, I've written that.
All right. Do any of the commissioners wish to take a break or would we like to go forward?
I would like a, a quick break, please.
All right, I'll move to have recess until eight thirty-five.
Us old guys can't go as long as you have.
All right, it's eight thirty-five, move to Reek and Bean. Ms. Veal, are we back on with audio video?
Chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item six B, S U B F Y two zero two four, or I'm sorry. Uh, item C, S U B F Y two zero two four dash zero 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 four, Keeney Estates, combined preliminary plat, final plat. Antonio Conti.
Yes, sir.
Is requesting a four residential lot subdivision. The property is currently located at four eighteen East Fifty-first Street, Haiti County, in the R three medium density residential zoning district. Again, the format for this will be a brief introduction, done, a presentation by the applicant, report by staff. We'll have the public hearing, rebuttal testimony, closing of the hearing, discussion among the commissioners, and then a decision. So we'll now hear from the applicant, again, please state your name and address for the record.
Antonio Conti seven six six one, West Riverside in Garden City, pretty much across the street from you guys, and next to your gate. Okay, just a second, I'm really computer savvy, so. This one, what do you want about, inter-screen? Thank you. It works? Yeah. So, uh, what we have in front of you is a preliminary plat, final plat application for a small parcel on Fifty-first Street, north of Chindon, south of the river. Uh, the current parcel, as you can see, has its, as we discussed, does this work? Sorry. How do you move? The, the screens? Okay, hold on, I'm a little fashion, there we go. Okay, as you mentioned, it's currently zone residential, R three, and we're gonna keep the same zoning, we're not asking for any change it. There is a, two existing house on the property at the moment. Uh, as you can tell, there's a house on the front, one in the back, uh, and there is an empty lot farther beyond that point. What we are proposing is to subdivide this parcel into four lots with a common driveway to serve the four lots. Uh, they plan to keep the existing house, the existing houses, each on their own lot and create two vacant lots on the back of the property. Following the design review, there were some, a request to create a buffer between us and the property to the north along the driveway, which we provide a six-foot wide landscape buffer. The access road is twenty feet wide, uh, it's gonna be fifteen foot, a paved road and five feet worth of sidewalk. Um, we need twenty feet for fire access, but we also want to have some walking connectivity to Fifty-first. And that's why, following a recommendation from the design review board, we added a rolled curb and a five-foot sidewalk that allows for the walking path, but also allow the twenty feet required by the fire department. Uh, the parcel, this is what the final plat is gonna look like. Uh, he, there would be an easement on the parcel, it's not gonna be its own lot. Uh, it's gonna be an easement across all the other four parcels. And this is just a quick copy of the landscaping plan, as you can see, we built a buffer between us and I don't know if that condo town, I think they're townhomes to the north of us. There's an existing fence between the two parcels, but we still created some sort of a landscaping buffer between the two. Uh, this is property zoned by, you know, a cop who's been in Garden City all their life. Uh, this is more of an estate planning for them, it's not a development, they don't intend to build, they don't intend to do much with it, it's just they're not young anymore like most of us, and they're looking for setting up for their kids in the future. Any questions?
Thank you, any questions for the applicant? I don't hear any questions, so thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Veal.
Good afternoon or evening at this point. And this is subdivision fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash zero 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 four for Kinney Estates. The application consists of one parcel totaling zero point six nine acres, which is to be subdivided into a residential subdivision consisting of four single-family dwelling units. The development proposes to access the property off of Fifty First Street through a common drive that reaches towards the back of the property. The proposed density of the project is five point eight dwelling units per acre and is located in the R three zoning district, as well as the mixed-use residential and neighborhood destination activity node of the future land use designation of our comprehensive plan. The land division application requests splitting the existing parcel with no proposed construction activity or alterations to the existing structures on the site at this point in time. There will, however, be new development and substantial alterations associated with the new structures on lots three and four. Many conditions have been drafted in the decision document to adjust for the lack of submitted materials specifically regarding the civil drawings. Knowing that the applicant's main desire is to only split the parcel into four lots, those conditions have been drafted and is therefore here in front of you today. Garden City does not have a simple lot split mechanism, and the, this particular parcel as is, is not eligible for a lot line adjustment, as it is only one lot currently. Prior to signature of the final plat, all the subdivision required improvements per H five A and as conditioned in the decision document will need to be installed and inspected for prior to the city signing off on that final plat. Once the final plat is signed and recorded by the county, it is at that point that the applicant or owners can submit building permits for construction on lots three and four, for structures. There have been multiple agents or agencies who have commented on the application, the first being Republic Services, and they were stating that the trash carts, if being utilized, would have to be serviced off of Fifty First Street. So there's a potential for eight trash carts along that frontage of the property, assuming that there's trash and recycling on one day for the four dwelling units. Another comment from the North Ada County Fire and Rescue District. It's not necessarily clear as to if they're going to require a hammerhead on-site, though they did mention that a fire hydrant capable of producing the required fire flow shall be located so that no part of a existing or proposed structure is more than six hundred feet from that hydrant. There is an existing fire hydrant, if I can zoom in on this, on the adjacent parcel to the south, basically where my cursor is pointing or circling. And, you know, depending on that distance to the proposed future building on lot four, it could be more than six hundred feet potentially. So that was a preliminary comment, but it wasn't necessarily a requirement to provide a hammerhead at this point. They did, however, require that the, the common drive is to be considered a fire access lane. And as a fire access lane, the fire department is not going to allow for any parking on that common drive, and they are going to require a no parking sign along that common drive. The reason why I point out this particular agency comment is because of the lack of proposed parking in the overall subdivision. The two existing homes do provide for the required parking. However, it is unknown how many bedrooms the, the new single-family dwellings are going to be, but they will need to provide that parking per code at the time that they submit building permits. However, right now, the subdivision requires two guest parking spaces in which they're not currently providing. An additional comment was made by the Garden City engineer. I think the most relevant comment that he has made is that, in regard to the, the waiver requests of the required submitted materials, he's okay with the preliminary title report, the ability to serve letter, and the natural hazard and resource analysis being waived. But as a final plat application, those civil drawings are required. And so he has stated that we believe contents of the above, which I just mentioned, could impact the project design and should be provided prior to entitlement approval. And reiterating the location of the, the property, it is within the neighborhood destination node of the comprehensive plan, which would, which does require that there's at least a fourteen dwelling unit per acre, minimum density as part of that designation in order to get the density required of a, a neighborhood destination or transit-oriented development node, the kind of exchangeable destination nodes in our comprehensive plan. So this, this subdivision proposes a five point eight dwelling unit per acre count, which is less than the minimum density requirement of the fourteen dwelling units. So a conditional use permit is required to allow for that density reduction request. That is a condition in the decision document to require a conditional use permit for that density request. As mentioned before, a lot of the civil drawings were not submitted, so any, any items related to the outdoor service equipment or the stormwater or the utilities, those were not reviewed, as they were not included, and conditions have been drafted to ensure that those are provided prior to the construction plans being approved. Another code compliance issue to mention is the, the lack of information found on the landscape plans. As a subdivision for single-family detached dwelling units, five percent of the site needs to consist of landscaping. Currently, that is likely being provided, just given that lots three and four are currently landscaped. However, without knowing what those future lots will look like or the existing square footage of the landscaping found on lots one and two, it is, it is currently unknown what the landscaping square footage is. But the site would require one thousand five hundred and two square feet, which would be reviewed at the construction plans level if approved or recommended for approval tonight. And another outstanding code compliance concern is the open space provisions of Garden City Code eight four L. As a subdivision for single-family developments, the site is required to provide ten percent lands, or not landscaping, ten percent common open space in which it has not been identified on the site. And given the final plat configuration, it does not, it's not apparent where that common open space would be. Even the common drive is not on its own common lot. It's a, it's an easement. So there was not enough information for staff to review the common open space, but it would need to provide three thousand and five square feet of common open space in order to be compliant with code. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Veal. Any questions for that?
I, I think I do have a question that is prompted.
Mr. Brown?
Hannah, if I understand what we're saying, we've had this before a couple of times where people that, since we don't have a provision for just a, resurvey and a lot adjustment here, where they come in to do this with a subdivision. If I understand, reading the decision document and what you, what you just said, you've taken care of almost all the stuff, including the stuff from the engineer and that with, in your requirements, but except you haven't, I'm not sure how you can do it, taking care of the, the common, common area requirement that you just mentioned. It's not clear on there where it's going to be in that. How do we adjust that? I'm asking you.
Commissioner Brown, so there is a condition to require compliance with that section of code. It would essentially end up being a proposal for common open space at a later point in time, which could be covered by an easement. And then within the CCNRs, the, the management entity would be responsible for maintaining all the common landscaping and the common open space.
In other words, they could do that at the time that they came in with the construction plans?
They could, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question, and actually, this might be a question that you should go to Mr. Conti, but I think I'll just ask it now in case. But my understanding is they want to subdivide, but there's no plans to build. Are they going to sell? Like, it's a question for him. But I'm curious, like, what if it ever changed in the future? Like, if somebody bought those properties and wanted to build a, like a higher-density unit?
Commissioner Shepherd, in speaking hypothetically, the two parcels in the back would need to go through permitting processes with the city. And depending on what that proposal is, they may or may not come in front of planning and zoning again. It might just be design review, and it, it might be city council. But the requirements for civil drawings would be required at that point in time prior to construction of whatever they are proposing.
So we approve the conditional permit for the reduced density. That just allows them more options, because that could always change in the future. But not necessarily. We don't know, but.
Hypothetically, yes.
Commissioner Shepherd, are you thinking? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Veal? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we do have signup sheet from the public. And just to clarify, is there anybody else from the public that wishes to testify that hasn't signed up? All right, seeing that, we have one signature. That's Alan Page. He has indicated that he is neutral and does not wish to testify. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. With that being the case, I see no one else from the public here that would like to testify. So we will now have rebuttal from the applicant.
Thank you very much, Antonio Conti, for the record again. We read through all the conditions of approval. A lot of them are based on unknowns on the side of the plat. That's why we're asking for, I don't know if it's a waiver, but not constructing any improvements prior to recording on the final plat. Because we know in that area, like Ms. Veal brought up, that you can go higher density in the back lots. They have no intention of building. That's not what they want to do. All they want to do is make it easier when they move on to the next phase, I guess. Let's call it that way politely, to let their kids, you know, handle this as this effect. So I know there is quite a bit of, you know, comments on construction plans and things of that nature. The request is to use a trigger such as any building permits and improvements on any of the parcel would require this construction permit, this construction plan to be constructed, not at this time upon approval of the final plat. So that, that will be the only condition that they're asking, if it's at all possible to have the final plat reported. In regards to selling the parcel, we had a conversation yesterday about it. They have no intention of selling it. Those are two long-term tenants that they have in those rent, in those units. They want to keep them. But again, if something happens to one or the other, they may end up selling just because they're going to have to, more than anything else. The other item I'd like to bring up, they were considering, instead of going four lots, just going three lots, if that suits your, it would help for approval by leaving the lot in the back, just one single lot. And the two houses, one in each lot, and leave the lot in the back as a single lot. As an engineer is challenging to design water and sewer, not knowing what goes in the back. I can design for single-family units, great. But if they decide to go townhouses, then whatever design is to be ripped out and replaced. And that's why they don't, they want to go down that, that road, if possible.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, hearing no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we will close the public hearing. This matter is before the commission, and we are a recommending body to city council. That will open it up to the commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Brown?
I'm in favor. I understand what they're trying to do, and it's a little bit different, but that's because of the way our, our code is written. So I'm in favor of recommend approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Shepherd?
Mr. Chair, I'm also in favor of recommending.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Chair, I concur for the same reasons.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Wilds?
I agree and support it, but, you know, I think fire access is a little bit tricky, you know, that far back.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilds. I agree with fellow commissioners, no other comments. And at this point, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilds? Thank you, Commissioner Wild. I have a motion from Commissioner Wild. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Shepherd. It's been moved in second, seconded. Any further deliberation on this matter? All right, hearing no further deliberation. I will put this to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And is there anything else the commission or staff would like to discuss at this point? All right, thank you all. We will be adjourned.
Thank you.